Six, 2016, water in Sora Commission Board Selectment Meeting. I will call everyone who's present, reading something from the minutes from December 16, 2015, regular session.
Move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to get any of it for me? Huh, sir?
Uh, let's see. Can we pull the camera in here? Can't do Green Quest, huh? New business. Incurrence and performance of Robert Chisholm, 91 Hillside Drive, to the consulating effect of January 8, 2016, to term to expire on April 30, 2019.
So moved.
Okay.
All in favor?
Can I just ask a question? One, Uncle Quack.
Sure.
Was he coming in, Nancy, or anything?
He was not coming in. Before Jim, when Jim was here, he did interview him, and he recommended him for a call.
He's the heavy sick guy, right? The smoke at town meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
He'd be pretty good about what he about.
Just so I have an idea.
We also have one other vacancy.
Oh, we still have one?
We have one more vacancy, and we have a couple of applications that can come in, so we're filling that hopefully shortly.
Okay.
Incurrence and the Department of Louis Pepe, 181 Febrick Street, the Position Assistant Building Inspector, effective January 18, 2016, to term to expire April 30, 2017, to be compensated at $25 per inspection.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I just want to make sure I'm understanding what's essentially going to happen with the building inspector, is that, I understand Chris is leaving, we're just going to rely on multiple building inspectors, multiple assistant building inspectors?
We currently have two assistant building inspectors, and we are appointing, Chris has opted to come in as an assistant, and this gentleman from town, who is retiring from Shoesbury, that's a job that Chris is taking. He has opted to help the town out as well. This should be probably a really quick turnaround. Chris leaves on the last, his last day is the end of the month, and our deadline for applications is that following Monday, so.
Now, Chris is the building inspector, but he's also the zoning enforcement officer.
Correct.
So, how's, we're not going to have a full-time person?
He's never had a full-time person.
Or, what was it, 25?
He was 32.
32. So, when, just a million people here, something like the Wayne's Weapon situation happens, it's, okay, $25 per inspection, who's going to handle things of that nature, the zoning enforcement action?
We actually put together, Chris put together a menu of different things like that, and if, if there was something recent show, we'd give a call to Chris. He said he exchanged emails, he said he's available after 5 o'clock, he's offered to come in on Saturdays, so he's going to make himself available, and as I said, we're expecting a pretty quick turnaround on this.
Plus, this is a slow time for buildings.
It's what he said. It's a very slow time right now for buildings.
It's just for the possibility of some zoning issue.
Correct. Question to follow up with that. So, we have, the job has been posted.
It has been. It's on the MMA website. I've gotten a couple of inquiries, I already got a resume.
And what's the deadline for the applications?
The last Monday of the month.
25th of January, the date that he's being appointed.
So if Mr. Purcell's not back by then, because we don't know, could this board then take over interview and appoint somebody, or is it only the interim town administrator to appoint?
It's, it's the job of the town administrator to appoint. He's the appointing authority for the position.
So we can't do it?
No.
We're going to address that issue in a little while.
Oh, okay.
Incurrence and the appointment of Christopher Lund, Shoesbury, Mass. I'm sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Incurrence and appointment of Christopher Lund, Shoesbury, Mass, the Position Assistant Building Inspector, effective January 25, 2016, to term to expire April 30, 2017, to be compensated $25 per inspection.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so let's go back, Mr. Shibley?
Craig Shibley, uh, come on up.
State your name and address, please.
My name is Craig Shibley, from Two Lost Oak Road.
Okay, and what can we do for you?
Okay, first of all, I appreciate the opportunity to speak before the board, and a happy new year to all of you.
Thank you.
It's nice to be here, it was kind of a journey to get here, but given the chance to speak. I would like to address two issues. One is the town of West Boylston's involvement with a law enforcement council that's known as the Central Massachusetts Law Enforcement Council, the acronym SEMLEC. And before I begin with, with what I would like to discuss very briefly before the board, I'm just wondering, does, I'd like to hear from the board, and what their, what their understanding of this law enforcement entity is.
Like, what's my?
All I know is it's involved about 50 or 60 of the police departments, they get together for drug task force units and stuff, things like that, is my understanding. Okay, that's, you don't know?
I have no idea.
I, I personally don't think it's our place. I think we hire the chief of police to look at this kind of stuff. It's not the place of the Board of Selectmen to, to know that kind of stuff. I mean, I, that's my personal opinion. I mean, I know about it, I know what it's about, but I don't, I don't think it's our place. I don't think it's our place to really, these two concerns on the, on the agenda. I think, I'm looking through some of the emails, if, if, I would say that you should speak to the chief about this stuff. But, I mean, I guess you can go on and tell us what you have to say, but I think the chief is the guy to answer these questions, not us.
Well, why don't you tell us your?
Yeah, I appreciate it. And I, I get, sure.
The issue within, or move forward from there.
That's fine. The reason I didn't go before the chief is simply because I do believe it's actually a town issue, since town money is helping fund this organization. SEMLEC, for the Board of Selectmen's understanding, is, is a nonprofit law enforcement entity that was formed in 2002, and...
Let me interrupt you. Can you give us your background in, in, do you have a background in law enforcement?
I don't know how that's relative, but no, I do not have a...
You asked me what's relative to me, so I'm going to ask you.
I'm, I'm not here to be antagonistic, Mr. McCormick. No, I do not have a background in law enforcement, sir.
Very good.
May I proceed, Mr. Hadley?
Yep.
Thank you so much. So, I have been doing some, looking into some of these law enforcement councils on a particular project that I'm working on, and SEMLEC obviously is, is one of those entities. There are actually nine such entities in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And what is disconcerting to me, Mr. Hadley and board, is that this organization, like I said, was formed in 2002. It had a particular FEIN, a federal identification number, which I'm sure, Mr. Crowley, your background is accounting, if I'm not correct, sir? You'd be very, you'd be very familiar with this. It had an FEIN of 04, 700 digits, not really germane to discussion. It turns out that though, that FEIN number is not legitimate, and only recently was this organization, was this organization properly constructed. So, my concern is this, is that taxpayer money does go to fund this, and, and so there is an appropriation, obviously, that this town makes, and the, and the police chief does present to the Board of the Finance Committee, which then is approved at annual town meeting. I, to my knowledge, I don't believe it's a line item, I just, I believe it's just a, I'm not sure how it's actually allocated, but money does go, because there's an annual membership fee that is required of all, all municipal police departments, as well as a couple of other law enforcement entities here in West, in Worcester County, that then feed into this organization. So that's where I think it's a, it's more of a town issue than specifically just a police department issue. That being said, as you'd mentioned, Mr. Hadley, that you're, were aware of a, at least they had a tactical unit, a SWAT unit, which is true, they do have a SWAT unit, most of these, majority of these LECs do. But what I found, and, and what I, I'm having a difficult time understanding, is that according to its bylaws, it actually has an array of different units, everything from a tactical K-9 unit, to a tactical emergency medical services team, to a crisis negotiations team, and others. Furthermore, it says in its Articles of Organization that the executive officer of each member agency must promulgate his own protocols with respect to calling out these specific, specific tactical units. To my knowledge, the police department doesn't have any protocol in place. Furthermore, as a result of the lack of protocol, these varying myriad of tactical units that it has, that nobody really knows what they're all about, because I've tried and others have tried to actually get this information, and it's a, it's a rather hardy stone wall, to say the least. I'm asking respectfully that until, until this board can understand what exactly certain members of this police department are doing, to my knowledge, according to the chief, only one, one member of the West Boylston Police Department actually is a member of at least the SWAT team. Now, I do not know if any other members are involved in this myriad of other teams, but there's obviously liability issues that I'm not sure, I've been told through different sources, that do not exist, in terms of, I know there's, I think each town must take out a million dollar insurance policy upon entering into an agreement to, to become a member of SEMLEC. But beyond that, I'm not sure what other type of liability insurance that the town has decided to, to take out, or should take out, in order to protect the fiduciary interest of taxpayers in this community, should, God forbid, that entity be sued for any type of potential wrongdoing in the course of, of executing its, its line of action or duty under the color of law. So I'm, I'm asking this board, first and foremost, given the fact that this entity, for over a decade, has essentially existed in limbo, and as a result of that, Mr. Crowley would, would certainly have a better understanding, given his background, is that they only existed in the eyes of the Secretary of State's office. There are no financial records otherwise that exists with them. So for a decade, this entity that received untold amounts of money in federal, in federal Department of Justice grant monies, nobody knows how much they got, nobody knows where the money is, if any.
Let me just address that for a minute. I want, I'm not going to speak to the insurance policy piece, I'm not going to speak to what they do. As far as what you're saying about an EIN, that's irrelevant to the, to the situation. They're either a 501, they're, you said they were nonprofit, I'm assuming they're a 501(c)(3). If they're a 501(c)(3), they have to have filed what's called a Form 1023 to get granted that status. If they're getting funds from the federal government, they're required to be audited. So, I don't have any of the, I'm just taking you for your word, I don't have any of the information, but what you're saying doesn't pass the smell test. You can't, the federal, and I've done federal government auditing before for community health centers.
And I've investigated it thoroughly, too.
But the federal government doesn't just write grants, you have, you have no choice but to provide your audited financials, if you're getting federal government grants, to, to provide the audited financials. And I'm with Mr. Rujo on this, I don't think that, I don't think that this is a Board of Selectmen issue, I think this is a police issue, and potentially something that might need to go to our town council. But the things you're saying, I'm not questioning whether you're, you're telling the truth or not, but the things you're saying, just based on my background, don't make sense that, you know, the, you can't get federal grants without having EIN, without having a, a 501(c), I'm assuming, you said nonprofit, I'm assuming it's a 501(c)(3). It could be under a separate chapter of the Internal Revenue Code, a different 501 chapter.
Understood.
There's, it's, it's C, 1 through 17. So, what you're saying on its face, if they're an entity getting federal money, it, it's a near impossibility for that to be the case.
A short response, then, Mr. Crowley? Historically speaking, one only has to look back to 2002, between 2001 and, actually, excuse me, 2000 and 2004. There are a number of LECs that are operating illegally, the Department of Justice got involved, and there, in this state of Massachusetts. You can look and research that. As for that being an improbability, sure, it's an improbability, but in a perfect world, sure, what you say should exist. But I'm telling you, if, if this community were to take the time to research, this is why I think this is actually an important issue to this town, because this town was a charter member of this law enforcement council. They were one of the, the original signing members of this council that was formed in 2002. So, I respectfully understand what you're saying, and I agree with what you're saying in theory, but the reality and the facts speak a very different story, and that's why I'm concerned, and that's why I'm here before you today, that I think you'd, you would reference the idea of maybe your legal council looking into this. It wouldn't take much time to, to, to look into it and to affirm what I'm telling you, which should raise a lot of red flags. It doesn't pass the smell test, sure, it doesn't pass the smell test, but that doesn't mean it's not happening, in all due respect.
Fair enough.
Mr. Shibley, can I just, are you just coming in front of us to inform us what?
Inform, and I was, I was asking respectfully that until this board, one, has more clarity, because be quite frank, I'm very surprised that only, I don't have my glasses, is it Rujo, is that how you pronounce your name, sir? That Mr. Rujo is the only one that has some degree of familiarity with this law enforcement council, that as of late has been quite active in this very community, with its SWAT team at least. So, if nothing else, I would urge this Board of Selectmen to, to become more informed. But more importantly, I think it goes beyond becoming more informed, it actually becomes, it involves garnering a firmer understanding, and until that understanding is reached, that, that you suspend temporarily all involvement with this law enforcement council, that would not have any detrimental effect, for the simple, for the simple fact, for the simple fact, for the simple fact, that, and any type of call-out that would be required could either be augmented, one by state police and its stop unit, which is its version of a tactical SWAT team, or the Worcester North County Drug Task, Drug Task Force. So there would not be any harm or any type of concern of safety of people in this community if, in fact, this, this Board of Selectmen took under advisement to possibly suspend involvement with this entity until you actually know what's going on in it. That's all I'm asking in that regard.
Alright.
Okay, so, and can I, I did have another point, though, and this was about, there were two things I was, I was being allowed to discuss.
Will you make it short? Could you make it short, because this is, really, this is nothing, this has something to do with the Chief of Police, that he'd be handling this, but what's the other point about?
Okay, just, just for the record, the reason I want to talk to the Chief of Police, because I did, I have talked to him before, and he's been less than forthcoming, so it's a more appropriate venue.
Go ahead.
That's fine. The other one is directly involved with this community, too, and I would hope that the Board of Selectmen have interested it, and that involves the West Boylston Police Association and its other entity called the Massachusetts Coalition of Police Local 172, that would be its union. Okay? This, this was brought to my attention through a different individual, but it was germane enough that I thought I would bring it up. And that is, in 2000, 1970 something, or 80 something, this West Boylston Police Association, benevolent association, was supposedly created, according to public record. In 2008 or so, around there roughly, it had its, it was revoked, its business operations was revoked by the Secretary of State's Office, they then filed a certificate of revival in 2009. My concern, and this is just a, I'm perplexed, to be quite honest, when this information was presented to me, is that prior to 2009, it had a FEIN number of a 27 dash whatever, nine digits. It then assumed a number of 04, number's not relevant. But what's interesting, or what's peculiar, is this West Boylston Police Association, benevolent association, has the very same federal identification number of the police union. So you have a 501(c)(3) and a 501(c)(10), I believe it is, so you have a union nonprofit organization and a 501(c)(3) charitable organization sharing the same FEIN. You can't have that.
Okay.
So, this is a legal issue, though.
Okay, we will take it up.
Do you understand the magnitude of that, though? Because if, in fact, they're sharing the same pool of money, once again, you have, you have...
Well, hold on, you're, you're taking a big, huge leap to say that that...
I'm saying if, I'm saying they are.
And sharing the same pool of money.
Well, if, if, if they have the same FEIN...
Mr. Shibley, I...
Are you, are you saying it's not true, then, Mr. Crowley?
What I'm, what I'm saying is that we've, we've, you gave us, we gave you some time, you said, we'll, we'll take it from here, that's what I'm saying. Thank you so much.
Can I expect, can I expect some follow-up, though, Mr. Hadley, as in terms of what you might take from here?
We will be in touch. If we have, if we have something we need to follow up with you, we will certainly let you know.
Appreciate your time, Mr. Hadley.
I guess my, just my one question is...
Sure.
I'm just, I guess maybe I'm just inquisitive. What is your background? What, I don't understand why you're here. You just are a good citizen, trying to protect the town of West Boylston?
Are you being sarcastic, or are you being serious? I'm curious. I couldn't tell by your tone, I don't know.
How long have you...
I've only lived here two, I've just lived just two years, sir.
Eight years, okay.
Two years, yeah.
And, so I just want to, I just want to try to understand what you're, why you're here. I, I understand what you've told us.
Okay.
Okay, and we'll look into that.
I hope so, I hope so.
We'll look into it.
Sure.
But why, why didn't you go to the town administrator and talk to him, rather than come here first, I guess?
Sure, I, I'd gladly share that story with you. I, I reached out to the town, the temporary interim town administrator, Mr. Purcell, I believe his name is? I think on four occasions, I think the, I don't, I forgot your name, I'm sorry.
Nancy.
Nancy. Okay, Nancy, maybe you can correct me, but I believe it's four times that I reached out to him, over a course of over a month, Mr. McCormick. He ignored three of the outreaches. And matter of fact, I think he was less than honest about the outreaches. Not until I sent him an email calling out his lack of professionalism, did he then respond to an email. So I take quite a lot of umbrage in the fact that it takes a resident of this community four attempts, and only raising the level of disbelief to such a point where it's calling out its professionalism, that he would respond. And then he said he would, he would meet, and then he threw in the fact that I had to meet with the chief. I told him I didn't want to meet with the chief, I wanted, I would meet with him, but all of a sudden, it seemed like, in all due respect, Mr. McCormick, unless it's general protocol, and I'm new to this town, so maybe you can enlighten me, but if every citizen has to go through some sort of shakedown to get before this Board of Selectmen, that's not an open and transparent democracy. And if, and if that is not the case, then I suspect there's something else going on here. I don't know what.
Yeah, I think we're all, we have a 501(c)(3).
It's not, it's not a...
I have a couple of copies, I have all different...
We certainly don't have a shakedown procedure, but...
Well, then, I don't understand why, then, it took me five attempts.
Well, we'll take...
The only thing I could say to that is, I think it's a waste of time for you to be here. You're fine, you can come in front of this board, but we'd like to bring someone in front of the board if we can answer their questions. We can't.
Can't answer any?
Well, I didn't know Mr. Purcell wasn't going to be here, otherwise we could have rescheduled. He should, he would have.
No, I don't, I don't know if he could answer the questions. I think that, I'm sure the chief is involved, and the police department, and the fire department, and the DPW, they're all involved with different organizations and groups that we...
Well, he could have been here. I included him in the initial email as a courtesy, and Mr. Purcell knows that, and so does Nancy.
And the only thing I would say...
So I don't know why he's not here, though.
Financial matter, that's not a financial matter to the town of West Boylston. Those are both, those aren't connected to the town of West Boylston at all.
So you wouldn't, you wouldn't be the least bit concerned in terms of any type of fiduciary alleged impropriety potentially, if, in fact, there are, there are two entities operating under a single shell, even though they legally can't? That doesn't disconcert you?
But you said it's a financial matter to the town. I don't, I don't think it is. I mean, that's my opinion. That's my opinion.
Really?
It's, it's a union that's not...
Connected.
Connected to the town, it's the, the red, the employees of the town, and it's a nonprofit that's not connected to town. It doesn't, doesn't fall under our purview.
But, 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 but members of those police are soliciting donations from residents of this town? Doesn't that, isn't that disconcerting at some level, Mr. Crowley?
It, right, that's like saying anybody, that we need to be concerned with any nonprofit that solicits from any resident of our town.
No, these are law enforcement people, so it should, it should rise to a higher level, Mr. Crowley, and I think, I think you're educated enough to understand the importance of that.
I think we've talked enough...
Just one last, one quick question.
Yes.
I'd like to know why or how you decided to look into this information. I'm, I'm just curious. Like, not, I, I can't think of a real reason, I'm, I'm trying to understand why you would be looking into something of this nature, like, is this your background, are you an auditor, and you just were looking at the town? I'm just curious as how this information came to be, and then what made you decide to look into it as much detail? I'm just trying to get my head wrapped around the process.
Like I said, Ms. Bonson?
Bonson.
Ms. Bonson, the issue of the 501(c)(3) with respect to the police department, those two, that information was provided to me, I wasn't looking for that, so.
Okay, are you an auditor of some sort?
No, I'm not, no.
Okay.
Not an auditor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I do know auditors, though.
Thank you, Mr. Shibley.
Thank you so much for your time, Mr. Hadley. Look forward to hearing from the board.
Alright, we're going to do a public hearing. Public notices hereby, given conformity of the requirements of the general bylaws, Town of West Boylston, Article 23, public hearing notice, the Board of Selectmen will meet on Wednesday, January 6, 2016, to 7:15, for the purpose of considering amendments to the policy E1, sexual harassment policy, and policy E4, non-discrimination policy. The meeting will be held in the Board of Selectmen's meeting room 140, Worcester Street, West Boylston, Mass. Alright.
Okay, back in December, on December 11th, we had an MCAD training, it was put on by Maya, Bob Marinelli, our loss control gentleman, came out, and these were two policies, two of the policies that we reviewed. They have now expanded the protective classes, so we are going to edit both of these to include the expanded version, and with Maya, if we amend these, we can send them in, and we are eligible, under our Maya rewards, to get a percentage point each towards our public officials liability line item. So this will result in Maya rewards, and plus give us updated policies, so that when we put our new employee packages together, we're in compliance with everything.
Excellent. So we need a vote on that, I assume?
You need to, you need to vote to, you need to ask if anybody has any comments first?
Oh, yeah, we have any comments from the public, and to vote to close the public hearing, is that correct?
So moved.
Second, anybody second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we need a motion to...
Motion to approve the changes.
Do we have to do them separately, or do we do them together?
You can do them together.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. From Green Quest? Green Quest, Green Quest?
Yeah, John Dutton.
Okay, come on up.
Time.
Perfect.
Green Quest Partners LLC requests for a license to be a collector of second-hand item in a one donation box permit for 21 West Boylston Street, which is the gas station, I think, is that? The BP? It's the BP gas station, that is correct.
Okay.
I'm representing my boss, Scott Zunick, and Eric Green. I'm John Dutton, I'm the manager of Green Quest Partners. We have a box there, and we're notified by town officials that you guys are implementing permits for our collection bins, and we just want to comply, and go ahead and see if we can get a permit for that one location that we have at that BP gas station.
Do you have anything needed in there?
We do, thank you. I do have a question. How often do you come to empty that?
Every two weeks, unless there's a problem, the owner will give us a call, and we'll be there within 48 hours.
Okay.
The reason we implemented these changes is because we have a lot of people throwing trash around, around reception fields and stuff like that, so we're trying to make everything clean up, and it's worked out pretty well. We've got, in the last three or four months, it's cleaned up the town quite a bit. Absolutely, I agree with that, and that's why if there is a problem on a location, the owner's to give us a call, and we'll be there within 48 hours, because it does happen, because some people don't listen, we put signs, don't leave any trash out there. But people want to do what they want to do, and we've got to handle some problems, and we understand.
Do you know if, do you know if you've had issues out here before?
Not here, no. Places like Brockton, we have.
Okay.
For sure.
Thank you.
No problem.
Your motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you so much. Have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Consider acceptance of $1,193 and 59 cents in donations from the public for loss of damaged books and other materials, donation to the use of printers and copiers, and donations given to the support, general needs of the library, on behalf of the town.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, we're going to review what we have... All right, we're going to review what the bylaws, what the bylaws and vote to send the bylaw made. This is something I've been involved in. We've had some issues with the bylaw, and the state's kind of mandated some bylaw changes, and we want to just get ahead of them so we can actually enforce the bylaws that we have. And we brought it to town meeting last year, and there was a couple of issues we had to resolve, and we have resolved them, and once we get approval from this board, we can bring it to the bylaw committee next month, and then they will vote on it. Can probably answer anybody's, any questions?
Off the top of your head, do you know what the changes?
It's just mostly enforcement. Someone right now, if they're dumping something in the river or something like that, we have no way of stopping them, no way to enforce them, they can't do a hundred-dollar day fine now and stuff like that. This is going to give us some enforcement action available to us.
Okay, was that the issue? I remember at town floor that that was...
We couldn't enforce it, there were some vague laws and stuff like that, we had nothing we could enforceable.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Do they have a motion?
Do we know, I motion that we accept the changes.
Second. Are we sending it to the bylaw committee?
Yes.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Time on fulfilling the position of DPW Director. Kim?
What am I going to hear?
DPW Director.
Oh, yes. Sorry, wasn't paying attention. Looking at something about the file. There were liabilities of this electronic stuff, it's pretty slow. I just want to know what our timeline is on looking for this permanent position of the DPW Director. I think it's time to get going. Anthony left when? June, maybe? I was guessing, I was right in that.
I was on the board when, when he left, I don't think it was...
So July. It was July.
It was right after.
You know what it could have been?
It was, it was...
It had been June, sometimes June or July.
Yeah.
So anyway, it's been six months, we're going into seven months now. We don't have a permanent DPW Director, we have not. I guess we got a recommendation on how to revamp our DPW. It must have been in a note report that I didn't see, but we did receive something. So I don't know, I just think it's time that we put together an, I mean a...
Posting.
Job ad.
A posting, yeah.
Sure.
Thank you for your help there. I need it. Okay, yes, a posting so we can get it out, get some resumes in. Hopefully, by the time we get all those in, we might have actually a new Town Administrator here that could actually start the process.
Sure.
And do some interviews and decide who he wants to, or she wants to be our new DPW Director.
When you had requested this item to be put on the agenda, I went through the Massachusetts Municipal Association website, and I pulled different ads that they had, and then I pulled the one that we used the last couple of times. What I could do is make packets for everyone, and you can look at what we have, and, you know, if there's something else that you think should be included, you could put it in, and maybe by the next meeting, we'll have a final for you to review and approve.
Yeah, that sounds pretty good.
Nancy, do we have a job description?
We do.
Could you put that with it, because if there's any changes in that job description before it is sent out?
Sure.
I'd like to review it.
I just want to say, I personally, I think that, I know there's some changes to the bylaws, but Mr. Kittredge, I think has made, has made the biggest improvement in the DPW in the last seven or eight years, and it's something he should be considered for this appointment. I know it's, we're asking for a professional engineer in our bylaws, I'm sure it's something we could change if we wanted to, but I just think the rest of the board should consider Mr. Kittredge also.
If I could just ask, is that set by bylaw or by charter?
Is what set?
The description of his job, it has to be an engineer, is that a bylaw in town, or? Is it, I don't...
I believe it's a bylaw. It was approved by the town.
I thought it was a bylaw, too.
Why don't I pull all of that and I'll...
So if that's the case, the only way we could change that is we would need to change the bylaw, so then that would even put it off even, till after May.
Till May, May or June.
Well, we could also approve Mr. Kittredge as an interim until...
I believe, I believe it's the job description. I don't believe it's the bylaw. I don't think the bylaw tells you what the DPW will be made of, form the DPW, but I don't...
I thought it was a bylaw, I thought Leon always said it was a bylaw. But at any rate, not that, I'm trying to cause a problem, but I think we should be discussing anybody in particular.
Okay.
Because I'm going to have Joe Schmalk, and I say he should be the guy that hasn't even applied yet, you know what I mean?
Yeah, okay, no problem.
So, I just, nothing personal, Mike.
No, I, I agree we could move forward, and I think the reason, Mr. McCormick, and I know we, a few of us agree, or maybe all of us agree, that that didn't help, we were waiting for that study.
I agree, that's why...
And that, but that didn't even answer our question, and we got...
Didn't do anything.
The study didn't help anybody.
Except the company that did it.
Yeah, they get $9,000.
So Nancy, if you can find out if it's a bylaw...
Yes, I'll get all that ready for you.
And I would like to see that.
Certainly.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Meeting invitations and announcements, Thursday, January 7, 6:30 PM, Selectmen's meeting room, informational meeting for sidewalk improvement project. And then, selections reports. Mr. McCormick?
I don't have any report. Oh, yes, we are still continuing our fire department union negotiations, and I believe we have an executive session, but I can fill in more on that.
The only thing I have that, we are continuing to work with the school on the teachers' contracts, and that's moving forward.
I have something regarding the DCR. There's several basketball leagues in town. They practice major edwards, they practice at the hillside on Boylston, we do a lot of joint stuff with them. There are not enough courts for the practice facilities. I reached out, I got the DCR directors, area director, John Scanlon?
Scanlon.
Scanlon? Got his name and number, I forwarded it on to one of the coaches, because it's my understanding that the Beaman Street property has a facility, and the answer that we got, or that the coach got, was, even though it's the Department of Conservation and Recreation, the facility is not open to the public. So I'd like to, as a board, reach out to both Senator Chandler and Representative O'Day and ask them for their assistance in working with the DCR. I don't see any reason why they're in our town, they use our services, our ambulances, our police, our fire, why we can't, why they can't work with us and the entities within town allow us to use their facilities.
It's not open to the public, is it open to?
It's, it's been brought up, we have, we used it in the past, and it's been brought up when he's at our meetings before, and he says the, the room is used for storage now, it's not a basketball court anymore, it's in rough shape. That was his answer, so I mean, I have no problem going to the center, but I think they have full control of the building, and we've asked, and we have used it years ago, but I think it's pretty, I think it's pretty rough, and he said it's used for storage, the building's too small for what they need, and they're using it. Whatever. I mean...
Can't hurt to ask.
That's right, when do we get the most?
We can ask.
I agree, do we need a vote?
If they won't let us...
Once he's scheduled again to come, Mr. Scanlon, he comes every six months.
February. He comes in February and August every year.
Oh, so...
But actually, he doesn't, no, I'm sorry, excuse me, sorry for interrupting, but on Tues, and on February, he gives us a written report, and August, he comes and reports in person.
Just, I mean, I'd just say we can reach out and ask him the question, and then get the answer, and then maybe we can send it on to the senator and the state rep. But... That's fine, I don't care what we...
Sweetie, I have something about the Town Administrator. We need to appoint Nancy as, what would you call Nancy, acting Town Administrator?
I believe that's what we did the last time, yes.
Do you have the right to sign and work for the town? Sign anything?
I, I agree, but I would also like to reach out to Mr. Purcell and see where that stands.
That's...
I agree a hundred percent.
I think that's as important as appointing someone, because if, if, we can't have two people appointed to, I don't think that can do the same thing.
His contract actually ended the end of December.
Okay, so we don't, so we don't have a, we don't have anybody right now.
So that's why we need...
Yeah.
All right, do we have a motion?
To do what?
Point Nancy as...
Nancy.
Would be acting Town Administrator, I would assume, because we don't, if it's contract ended.
Is the interim?
Is it interim or act?
I haven't even talked to you about it.
He's interim. It's called interim Town Administrator. And remember how we, we took his contract, and originally it was a shorter version, then we extended the contract, and we extended it through November and December, and then he went to two days a week. And...
I would, I make a motion that we appoint...
Interim or acting?
Would be interim.
I would appoint, I make a motion we appoint Nancy as an interim, as the interim Town Administrator, because we're, look like we're maybe kind of on the final leg of looking for, maybe getting somebody. And, and then we have to figure out a compensation package, obviously, and maybe John and...
Yeah, and if something you don't, if you feel you need further help, you will let us know. If you, if you need...
Backup.
Right?
I do have a question. I think it's important, as Mr. Ruccio said, that we at least get some kind of idea from Mr. Purcell, as in, I cannot return, because I don't think it's fair to Nancy to put all this on her, and if we think it's going to be another three months and he's not able to come back, then maybe we have to do something else.
I agree a hundred percent. I just want something for the next couple of weeks to bring us over.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And maybe, maybe John and, I mean, I'm not, and somebody else, someone else wants to...
We'll work a compensation package, yeah.
I think we have, I, I think we already have something in place that we could probably just put her into it, because I, I think we could do, talk about it, but I think we have something in place now.
I think it's going to take more than a couple of minutes, yeah.
Right.
Figure it out, you know what I mean? You agree?
I agree.
I hate for stepping up and doing everything you've done in, including this, Nancy. This, you know, we're one town, we're all working together, we're going to get this done.
All right, Kevin, want to read the executive session?
We have future agenda?
Almost, where are we?
I thought we did talk...
No, we did second.
Future agenda.
You know, I have something written down, but I can't, I don't know what it says.
Did you have to read it?
Well, I didn't get to finish writing it, now I don't know what it was, but...
Go ahead.
Go ahead, and you guys go on, I'll try to think of what it is.
I'm all set at this time.
I have that interest, I...
I'm all set, too.
I'm all set, go ahead.
[laughing].
What the heck was it?
Time's up.
I don't know.
He's going to think about it immediately, as you're probably...
It doesn't, it can't be all that important, I do remember. I can't think, all right, continue, I make a motion, we move into executive session under the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21a, Part 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body, this is fine negotiations.
I just...
Second.
Mr. McCormick?
Yes.
Ms. Bonson?
Yes.
Mr. Hadley?
Yes.
Mr. Crowley?
Yes.
Mr. Ruccio?
Yes. Can we go, we will now be returning to open session.
Motion to adjourn.
Don't we make that in there? We adjourn our executive session, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
But it says, it says we will reconvene.
Yeah, but why, I don't, that, why would we?
Why would we?
Because we have to sign a convention.
Next one.
Nancy, we, we...
Reconvene?
Because we have to sign.
It says we will.
I tell them I do it till next meeting.
No, we need to, well, we can wait till next meeting, it doesn't...
You can do you want, you can wait till the next meeting, because we still have time.
Yeah, plenty of time.
Yes.
We'll do it next meeting.
All right.
Thank you.
Get this on, yeah. I got here, send two, send T.I. T.I. shot.